I got the chicken hammers on.
Okay, we are on air.
Oh, hey.
We've got hot mics.
And Councilor Studdly, so we're all here. Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. It's 5:00 and we're on air. So, City Council Special Meeting for Tuesday, June 28th. We have two items on this agenda. The first one is a discussion regarding submitting an application for a hazard mitigation grant to the Federal Emergency Management Agency for Phase One improvement plan to lower Imhoff Creek and the use of American Rescue Plan Act funds for Phase Two of the project. Yeah, city staff here.
Thank you, Mayor Proseman. Council appreciates the chance to do that. That title is a mouthful, so I know the staff reports on Items 18 and 19 are even more complex. I'm hoping to break this down for you to make a nice, easy decision tonight on these items, but the impact of your decision on this is extraordinary, and I'll get into that in a minute. Scott Sturridge, City Engineer, is with me. Jason Murphy, our Stormwater Program Manager, is at a conference, and he hates not being here because he helped us get to this point. So, we're talking stormwater. We're talking Imhoff Creek. And again, just a little background, I weren't sure how many of you have really delved into the whole stormwater program here in Norman, so do a little bit of Stormwater 101 here. We have lots of north-south channels. There's actually one off the map here to the left. That would be 10 Mile Flat Creek, and then Brookhaven Creek and Merkel Creek. Some people call that Normandy Creek. We have two different names for that. Imhoff is the one we're talking about tonight. That's the oldest and probably the most troubled of all the creeks, which makes sense. It's been out there for 110 years under development. It's had lots of damage to it, and we'll talk about that. Bishop Creek is the one that goes through the campus and the duck pond area. And then beyond that, we get out into Lake Thunderbird watershed. So, this is all the Canadian. Everything flows from north to south. All these creeks flow into the Canadian River just south of Norman and then flows south of our city. Imhoff Creek is about four and a half miles long. It is about 96% developed, so there's not a lot of undeveloped properties that are yet to discharge more water into it. We're sitting right next to it. Andrews Park is Imhoff Creek. We talk about the WPA channel, that beautiful stone work that was done back in the '30s under the FDR program. That was a 1930s project, building those stone walls on Imhoff Creek. The headwaters to Imhoff Creek are at the Robinson Street underpass. So, a lot of people don't know that. That's where the water starts coming into that watershed. When we built the underpass, the big worry at that time was, oh, when you lower that road, where's the water going to go? So, we've got this triple redundancy beautifully designed stormwater system, but when that water gets picked up by those pumps, it discharges south toward us and then along Imhoff Creek. So, that's a little background on Imhoff Creek. Again, 100 years of history, but I'm just going to go back a few that are kind of more relevant. So, you all recognize the picture to the left there. That was our most recent history, when the bridge caved in on Imhoff Road. Councilor Schuler, God bless you for living through all of that, but we got through it. We did spend $1.8 million to fix it, and it was a difficult closure for a number of months. But that's the most recent issues on Imhoff Creek. That's Imhoff Creek going under that road. If you go back a bit, the Stormwater Master Plan, I have my copy right here, my tattered-edged copy that I've read 100 times, from 2009 identified about 60 projects in Norman. We'll get into this here in a minute on this one. Imhoff Creek was one of the highest-ranked projects that we really needed to address. We've been talking about doing this for at least 13 years, and it gets worse every year. I'll show you some pictures. In 2015, we had probably the biggest flood we've had in the last 20 or 30 years, 23 inches of rain in May and June of 2015. Our largest year of rainfall in history was 13, so we had 10 more inches than the record in 2015. One of the most damaged, we had 26 roads closed for a few months. In that flood, it was awful, and the most urban-impacted system in the stormwater system was Imhoff Creek. I'll show you some pictures. It was pretty awful. My favorite bridge, probably in my career, I've built many of them in my career, but one of my favorite bridges is the Imhoff Road, or the Lindsey Street Bridge here in the lower frame. Not only is it beautiful, but it is a great bridge structure that Scott and his team put together, and it's obviously a wonderful gateway into the University of Oklahoma. So, a little bit of history there on other parts of Imhoff. So, I mentioned the master plan, 60 different projects. You know, we went to the voters with a $60 million, $60 million bond issue in 2019, as you know how that turned out. This project is now the highest-ranked, most significant project of those that we haven't yet been able to do in the top five. So, we've been working away at this. The voters told us, go find other funding, so we've been looking at every federal funding grant we can get our hands on. For instance, Lake McGee, which was the biggest number-one project in Norman, was funded through transportation grant funds. And as Scott said, it was a...
A drainage project with a road on top.
Drainage project with a road on top. It's been a while since I've...
Thank you.
Anyway, the Long Court, which we evacuated twice in my time here. The owner closed that one for us, so that was wonderful, at Indian Hills Road and I-35. We built the West Main Street Bridge with bond funds, and the one that we haven't done is at Sinclair and Beaumont Drive in Ward 1. This is a road crossing, pipe culvert road crossing just east of Kennedy School. Needs to be enlarged. It floods during major rains. You've probably seen this, and it would be the next ranked project once we secure this one here, if you go in the ranking order of those 60 projects. So, now we're going to get into some of the way it looks. So, I mentioned the floods of 2015. Before that flood, the upper photo was a liner product that we tried back in the late '90s, early 2000s. It worked really well until that year, and then the lower frame is what happened after the flood. So, all of that lining material, the pipe sections and all that washed away. You can see it kind of down here. It was a pretty major damage and resulted in us trying to secure FEMA disaster relief funds, which we did. Council approved it, and we went about to repair this portion. So, this is just south of Lindsey. Westbrook Terrace is right there, if you know that little area. And then the red saw line, the yellow ellipse and the red ellipse are what we had to repair. Took a lot of design and working in people's backyards. It was a challenge to get down to that project, but it really turned out pretty well. Here's what it looks like in the end product. And while I've spent my career building concrete liners, we try not to do that anymore. That's a little bit of a hard skate stormwater treatment that we try to avoid and go back to natural materials, kind of like the thing to the right. And that's in our standards. We call that low-impact development design standards, and that's what we'd like to design. But when it got as bad as that one got, we had no choice but to go in there and line that thing with concrete. So, it's not going anywhere. It's going to serve us for decades to come, but it doesn't look very nice, and it really doesn't meet our design preference for stormwater, and I'll talk more about that here.
Kind of acts like a slide, too. The water just...
Probably great for a skateboarder.
So, when it gets down to the end, it can erode the end into the...
It increases the velocity of the flow. There's lots of reasons you don't want to do that anymore because there's an end to that.
Pollution, filtration.
The heat of the water, all those things. And that structure that was shown on another photo is actually what we did at the end, which is a drop structure that's completely rock, and it's allowed that water to slow down before we send it on downstream. So, we built a very large, very substantial, well-engineered drop structure there at the end to try to protect the stream from that point down.
You're saying that second picture at the bottom is the end of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so we did try to, at the end, take it back to a natural state, so it's coming off the top of that box into this drop pool to make up the elevation drop, and then that rock helps slows it down, and it's a pool so that the water kind of stills and has a little bit of, it helps take the energy out of the water, if you will, slow it down and make it less erosive.
Looks pretty.
Looks kind of cool.
It's aesthetically pleasing.
It is. It goes back to the natural, the way the rivers were. That's the ultimate goal, is to go back to Mother Nature.
You're like a beaver, Sean.
Thank you. That's why the end of that, too, aquatic rodents. We like to call them aquatic rodents. So, let's talk about Imhoff, Lower Imhoff Creek project, or what's left of it. Again, I've shown you some of the previous areas that we've already done. Now, we're down to these last two pieces, so we've divided them up into phasing, frankly, because we never thought we'd be here with you to talk about funding the entire thing. It's just a remarkable conversation that we're having here, and a little bit of luck, a lot of good, hard work on everyone's part, too. So, Phase One is that lower section from Highway 9 going up to Imhoff Road Bridge. The bridge we just repaired. It's about 2,200 feet long, and we're estimating the cost to fix that is about $3.8 million. Phase Two would be from that point, so Imhoff Road going north another 2,000 feet, we're estimating that to be about a $4.4 million project. So, about $8.2 million to fix this entire mile or so of channel.
Councilor Peacock?
Just real quick, why is the shorter one more expensive? What factors are going into that?
You know, a lot of it is just because of the confined area we have to work in, and also there's more erosion occurring in that section. There are some sections on the south section that we actually are not going to have to address because they're actually kind of a stable condition.
Okay.
If you think about it, there's that long, almost, there's that long section there where there's no houses next to it. And so, that's kind of in a more natural state, but the areas where we're budding, the houses are having a lot more erosion problems. So, it does seem kind of counterintuitive, but it's just because there's actually more work that will need to be done on that northern section.
I figured there was a good reason, so I appreciate it.
Great question, and I would say, too, that Phase One is fully designed. We are shovel-ready. Phase Two is not, so Phase Two is a little bit more of a, maybe not an exact estimate.
And there's, it's right that there's no easement on this whole creek, right? No public easement.
We've got to buy easements, accessways. It's going to be a challenge to build, for sure. I want to mention in the lower left here, and some of you may not be able to see it so clearly, but one of the cool things, I thought, lots of cool things in our Stormwater Master Plan, but we took those 60 projects and ranked them. Council actually developed a ranking system, which is really unique and interesting and thoughtful, to try to bring some priority to those 60 projects. And so, this one, Lower Imhoff, ranked as the number-five project in the city among the 60. It was number-one in Ward 4 and Ward 2, and it was number-two in the watershed. So, this is a high-priority project in that plan that we published in 2009. As I said, we've been working on trying to get it built since then. This is just a map of kind of showing you where some of the damage is, and then this is a photo of what it looks like. If you're able to ever walk down there in the backyards of these homes, you're going to see a lot of that. It's eroding rapidly. The next photo will be a little better picture of that, but these are cutting into lots. These are homes right off of the drawing there. Here's a worst section, so as that erosion happens, the trees come down, all the vegetation goes away, and it has no reinforcing for future erosion. You've got to stop the bleeding, if you will, and that's what this project will do.
There's more of that articulated block in the middle of that photo that washed all the way down into this section from that north section. That's how powerful those floods were in 2015.
There's some of our engineers and surveyors in the drawing there. So, this is getting worse every year, and there's no time like the present to fix it. Again, same, I think some of these are downstream of Imhoff. It's just pretty obvious, you can see the little, I don't know what that wooden structure is, but that was built by the homeowner, and that's probably not going to last anymore after the next storm. So, I want Scott to kind of talk you through a little bit of that, this concept of natural materials for the stabilization of those banks.
Thanks, Sean. So, as we said, we don't want to build that concrete liner anymore because that destroys habitat for fish and aquatic animals, turtles, whatever wants to get down in there. I know that people said they've found plenty of snakes down in there before, and we want to make sure that we're fostering that. We think it's better. It also is a lot better for the velocity, it's submitted to those homeowners. So, we've looked at natural ways to do that, and one of the things that we're looking at right now is this system. It's called an RSS system, and I've heard about 10 different things what that means. Basically, it's a very simple system. We'll have some wire cages, and there will be fabric behind that that's very durable that will last a long time. That's packed with a material that holds all that in place, so it's kind of goes back into the wall a little bit, so the weight of that keeps everything from shifting. And then in each one of those little areas, each one of those lines is another layer of that stacked up, so it's a small area. But in each one at the top, there's a small area that's got a plantable medium in it, so there will actually be plants planted at each step of this, and they're usually anywhere from a foot to three foot, depending on the size of the wall. And then that material, that plant material, will grow over, so it will, in the end, look like a vegetated wall, and it's something that's very easy to maintain. We use native plants in it, and so that's one of the things that we've kind of pointed out here. This minimizes, compared to doing a wall or just laying it back at a slope, it minimizes the amount of property that we have to take from those adjacent property owners. It uses vegetation. It looks natural, and it creates a habitat in the future. And then we'll also be using cross veins, which is this other drawing down in the lower left. And across vein, basically, it helps slow the water down. It helps lower that elevation, so it's a way for the water to get that elevation drop, and it also directs the water back to the center of the channel instead of going along the edge of the bank and eroding at the edge of the bank. So, a lot of things we're using here that are proven. These have been used very successfully in other streams throughout Oklahoma in urban environments, and we know that they're great opportunities for us here to put them in use here in Norman.
And in Norman, we use similar product on Brookhaven Creek and Ward 3 a couple years ago on the West Main Street Bridge, so not a first time for us.
Councilor Lynn?
Just a quick question, maybe, I apologize if I missed it. What's the longevity of that compared to the alternate?
You know, these are expected to be 30-, 40-year solutions. Really, once it get going, because of that geosynthetic fabric they're using, it doesn't degrade very fast, and then there is that wire mesh that's there also, so it's a thicker wire mesh, more like a wire panel, like a hog wire, if you will, but little tighter grids. And then the addition of the vegetation also helps slow the water and stop it from being eroded or torn up. I mean, obviously, it's not going to last as long as a concrete channel, which is going to have a longer life, but there's a lot of positives to this design over going to that.
In just my opinion, aesthetically, everything, everybody would hope like this, but when you say it's used in other Oklahoma places, what is your, where are you looking at that it's been used and it's still, and they haven't had to mess with it in 20 years? What do you have?
This technology is, I'm going to say it's probably in that 20-year window of being utilized. It's also used a lot on railroads and highways, so it's something that we've seen in a lot of applications. Like Sean said, we've used it on Brookhaven Creek. They used it, I can't remember the name of the channel in Tulsa, but it's kind of the highlight right now of how to do urban stream restoration in this region, not just Oklahoma. But it's a very durable system. We have researched it. They've been working with this for a while, but again, I can't give you a timeframe for when they first started being installed. I've just never gone back and looked at that.
I just, you know, it's one of those things like, hey, you know this one's going to last, but it looks like garbage takes away of what it's actually supposed to be, and I just hope that it's worth the bang for the buck, and we're not at it again in five years, 10 years, when the other one...
Appreciate that. Great question. I appreciate that, and that's, we feel the same way. This will be an engineered solution, and I think we could find some similar products in Tulsa, for sure. They lead the country in stormwater projects, but I know there are some in Oklahoma City and Edmond, too, that I'm aware of, so happy to chase down some examples for you. So, again, getting back to the kind of the subject at hand, item number 18, I would almost refer to this as housekeeping, but I want to minimize the point here. So, this is related to Phase One, which is that lower portion. This is Imhoff Bridge down to State Highway 9, 2,200 feet long, $3.7 million. We applied with your consent last year for a FEMA grant. It's actually a different grant than this one, grant program than this one, and we were notified, this is kind of what brought us here tonight, we were notified a couple weeks ago that, hey, your project is ranking really well, but it ranks better in this FEMA program instead of that FEMA program. And oh, by the way, the federal government just changed it from a 75-25 program to a 90-10 program.
Excellent.
Good. We said yes. It's good. So, item 18 on your agenda tonight is resubmitting a grant application. It's all you're doing, resubmitting the same grant application for this, what we call Phase One, for 90-10 money, and I'll show you the numbers here in a minute. And we think that this will come back to you around August for acceptance of the grant. This is really moving pretty quickly because of all the federal infrastructure money that's available. So, that's what you're doing tonight. If that happens, we are shovel-ready. We can get to a bid in September and begin construction in December of this year, 2022. We think it's about a 12-month project to finish. So, by next Christmas, or a year from this Christmas, we will be finished with the first phase of this, if you approve item 18.
Councilor Hall?
I don't want to get ahead of you, so have you made all the comments that you want to make about item 18?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, on this one in particular, it is pretty straightforward, and as monumental of a project as this is, this is just housekeeping on our part, but what I wanted to point out is this is, as you've already identified, the number-one stormwater project, capital project in both Wards 2 and 4, and has been for a very, very long time. And the significance of us even getting to this place and considering cleaning up how we move forward with the grant on approval from the council, we were not optimistic about getting either one of these grants. Our former stormwater manager, Carrie Evenson, was, as is all city staff, very aggressive about pursuing any kind of possible grant opportunity that the city can take advantage of, and I can remember clearly when she presented her report at that time that she felt like it was a long shot. So, to even be successful, and now we're talking about improving 75-25 match, which is also already really good, and now we're talking about a 90% match. I mean, this is, you know, something that we don't really get to talk about very often, and for the $63 million in capital stormwater projects that we have out there, to actually have funding available for one of our top five projects is wonderful.
Councilor Schuler?
I'm just going to pile on and say, I mean, I think how critical this is for Ward 2 and Ward 4, not, but I think for the city in general, because this is a massive project that I don't think that anybody ever considered that we could do in one go, and the fact that we get this project off the table frees up more money for all of the other projects that come behind it, all of those 60-some projects that we have listed, you know, in our stormwater plan, and we have many really needs. And so, I think that, I don't know that we've ever could conceive of having an opportunity to get this much money from federal match grants.
And this is just part one.
Right.
There's part two coming.
That's right.
So, I mean, like, this just, to me, is such a slam dunk in allowing for infrastructure improvements in such a critical area, not to mention that the bridge was such a labor of love.
That's one way to put it.
And I just would really like to underscore how important this creek is and why the bridge failed the way that it did was because of stormwater issues and how much problems are going on in these areas, and we just spent millions of dollars to fix that bridge. So, being able to sure up this creek system here will only improve on that investment as well that we just made.
And actually, when you go back and look at it, part of the reason that this is scoring so high is because of the cost-benefit ratio, or benefit-cost ratio, or BCR. And part of the reason that BCR is so impressive right now is because if this creek continues to what we call headcut, which means erode, it will eventually get back to Imhoff Bridge, and it will take that bridge out again. It's a fact. And when we were doing the repairs to the bridge, we actually made some minor adjustments to the bridge that actually allowed us to maintain those scores and also take out some costs from the bridge so we didn't go way over budget. So, this project is actually critical to maintaining that asset.
And the bridge, I remember before, is there a bigger overall replacement project that is needed for that bridge, or does this get us through for a while?
You know, we really believe that that bridge, as repaired, will serve us for another 30 or 40 years at least. And again, the longer, the sooner we do, these improvements are more so.
Yes.
But in terms of capacity, it meets the current capacity requirement.
Well, I recall a few years ago, when we were doing the stormwater votes, that the outlook on getting any kind of federal grants for stormwater was really grim. It was almost like they didn't really exist. We could blend them in with road projects sometimes, but there was almost nothing that was just for this.
Bingo.
And it seemed crazy because, you know, we're almost in 2020 at that time, and we're thinking, all these years of flooding in all these cities and across the country, how could there not be a federal program or state program to fix these urban creeks that, you know, anyway? So, it is very exciting to finally come across this, like the...
Councilor Hall said it well. Carrie and I both felt that way because there hadn't really been these programs, or wasn't a lot of money in those pods, but I think the infrastructure bill is starting to help those. Like we've talked before, we always figured when that infrastructure bill was announced that the federal government was going to just channel that into existing programs, and that's what happened here.
And because these gentlemen keep us shovel-ready, that makes us so dangerously competitive when the dollars hit the table. We're first in line, and we've got engineering designs and a great story to tell, and that's because they are forward-thinking.
It's really been our advantage for as long as I can remember, is Norman's always ready to go.
Pretty good for me.
For the last 15 years.
The counsel, a big part of that.
Councilor Hall or Schuler?
He hit the shovel ready. Yeah.
So, kind of moving to the second part of the discussion, but the same general topic is your, it's actually item 19 on your agenda tonight, and that is getting up into the Phase Two, which is that northern reach from Imhoff Road going north about 2,000 feet, currently estimated about $4.4 million. Back in September of last year, so '21, we had a study session with council, and you had just learned about the ARPA funding that came in two different tranches, and council wanted to know if we could peel off some of that for stormwater, so we had a study session to talk about what we, as staff, thought might be priorities for you to consider, and of course, Imhoff Creek was the number-one priority. You chose at that time not to appropriate. You were still taking into account all the different requests. So, item 19 is the appropriation of that $3 million that you all had talked about then into what would now be Phase Two. So, over the course of two years, if you do it that tonight, approve item 19, we would be fully funded for Phases One and Two. You can see the schedule that we're suggesting here, that we would appropriate the funds tonight. We would negotiate a contract with that same engineering firm, MeShak, to design that project. It's not shovel-ready. We can bid the project about a year later, so about this time next year, and then begin construction in the fall of '23. So, kind of on the tail end of Phase One, you start Phase Two and complete that about a year later. So, about two-year period, we would have constructed both Phases One and Two, if you approve item 19.
Okay. Councilor Hall?
So, as we consider this item, I think you summed it up nicely, and we had a pretty extensive study session on this topic. There was consensus at that time to basically hold $3 million, reserve $3 million for a stormwater project. When we first were learning how to understand what was available and what would be appropriate dispersments of those ARPA funds, stormwater was one of those categories that was absolutely at the top of the list. So, there's no question, there is no daylight, that this is an appropriate use of those fundings, and even with continued, the final ruling, that has stayed the same. So, since that time, when we have revisited other dispersments that we've made with the ARPA funding, we have also reached consensus more than one time on hanging on to that $3 million and the importance of trying to at least peel off one of the most needed capital stormwater projects. So, sometimes it's worth the wait, and to be able to have the news about the grant funding that's available and the opportunity to literally be able to take this on all at once, which we did not think was possible, I just think we're right on track for the conversations we've had for a year and how we want to move forward with all that. So, I'm just delighted that we have the opportunity to talk about this tonight and to go ahead and meet that commitment that we really have already reached consensus on to fund this stormwater project, so full support.
And to Councilor Hall's point, it's fascinating. It's hard to say where the science ends and the luck begins, but $3 million kind of felt like we could find one of the projects on the list. No idea if that was going to be way too much money or not near enough money, and the grant shows up, and then all of a sudden, the picture becomes crystal clear that $3 million is almost exactly what we need to do the other half of that project upstream. And they do say it's better to be lucky than good, and I think we were good and lucky. So, thank you for your programming of that $3 million. So thank you for your programming of that $3 million into the world of stormwater, and tonight we'll appropriate that 24 completion deadline well in advance of the ARPA spend-it deadline in 2026. So right on track.
Councilor Pico?
Just kind of follow-up on that. Given the runway we have on this Phase Two fiscal year '25, if infrastructure dollars become available, are we able to pivot out of these ARPA dollars and use those?
I think so. Yeah, because we won't be under, we won't be fully designed for another year. So that's a great point to talk about it.
That opportunity is available still.
Entirely possible. So you'd be appropriating, again, but we're not doing anything with it except design for a year or so.
Perfect.
I won't dwell here, I just would say that council's been having this discussion for many, many years. And in your, you know, one of our theories was you were going to put $550,000 away for seven consecutive years to kind of build up about $3 million to do one of these phases. So that's where we were a couple of years ago, and that was the best we could do. We were happy about that.
Twice the cost, probably.
And Councilmember Hall spoke to, I think Councilmember Schuler also, that now with these two federal grants, and I'll show you the numbers here in a minute, you will not be allocating $550 for Imhoff. You can do another project, or three projects, or whatever you choose to do when that budget discussion happens. And then the rest of this is really, I mentioned, the grant we applied for last year was actually, acronym was BRIC, it's, I never can remember the, Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities. It was a pretty new program, and we'd never worked with it, so that's why Carrie and I were pretty reluctant to think it was going to happen. But anyway, that's what we applied for last year, and now we're going to convert that to a hazard mitigation grant program, which has been around for many years, and then combine that with the ARPA funds. So here's kind of how the numbers break down. If you approve both items 18 and 19 tonight, you can see the numbers that we talked about. So basically about an $8.2 million total package of improvements. Federal funds or federal grants from the two sources would be about $6.4 million, leaving the city share about 1.7, which is almost in the bank with that $550 that you've been putting away. One more year of that, and we'll have the match. So there will be no additional funding necessary unless we come up with another grant in the interim, that could happen. Bottom line here, this kind of breaks down to about an 80-20 project when you shake it all out, about 80%, someone else's money, 20% local funds. Not too shabby. We don't get to do that very often, not for something of this scale.
Had me at 80%.
Anyway, so that's our request for you tonight. Happy to take questions. Appreciate the time. These are items 18 and 19, very important items, lots of staff report information. We appreciate the chance to break it down for you. And again, it is extraordinary. I never thought I'd be sitting here with you. When we rolled that out in '09, the Imhoff Creek project was the one I said we'll never do in my time here, now that I'm still here. It's just too big and too expensive. So this is a, just an amazing opportunity we have, and we got lucky. But we all worked hard for the last 13 years to put ourselves in this spot. Council did everything we needed.
Something saying about, like, hard work and luck meeting or something, I don't know, preparation.
Preparation, hard work.
Something like that, yeah. And a little bit, so.
You made your own luck.
Councilor Hall?
Yeah. The only really final comment that I have to make about it is, you know, I've now completed three budget cycles, and the first two were dark, dark days. And, you know, because of the opportunities that we've been given with all of this federal money that's available, I mean, we have been given an incredible opportunity to provide answers for our residents. And to be able to take this on in one, at one, in one piece, instead of having it take 10 or 15 years to complete, is just such a positive outcome, particularly for people who own property on Imhoff Creek, and literally their backyards have been eroding into the creek for decades. So relief is on the way.
Okay. Anything else, anybody? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Great news. Okay. Our second item on the agenda is a consideration of adjourning into executive session as authorized by Oklahoma statutes under Title 25, let's see, Section 307b for, to discuss pending litigation associated with the City of Norman versus Ron Ashley, Cleveland County District Court case CJ 2021-337, in the amount of $210,000. Looks like we have Beth here. Motion to adjourn into executive session?
Second.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Meeting of June 28, 2022. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Studley?
Here.
Councilmember Peacock?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Holman?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have, it looks like on here, council announcements are on the first part here. We'll start with Ward 1.
Yes, so the only announcement that I have today is we are facing a crisis right now with fentanyl, specifically in Cleveland County. Norman Police Department, excuse me, has reported that there has been multiple incidents where people are overdosing. We're talking about twenty-something, so these are our college students. There's also people in our homeless community that have died from overdosing from fentanyl. And I just want to make sure that everyone is aware that this is coming from the South, it's traveling up I-35, it's making it here to Norman, it's being passed out in cocaine, it's in pills, it's in heroin. So please, I am begging everyone, if you know anyone that has an addiction problem, please make them aware that this is a very serious issue. And NPD is running out of Narcan to even resuscitate people right now. So it is really, really critical. People are dying. If you know people that are addicted, please make sure that you pass out the word. Stay away from the stuff right now. It's not worth dying. That's all I got.
Councilmember Schuler?
Yes, I just wanted to talk a little bit about looking forward. Next month, we will have our council retreat to think about priorities for our upcoming council year. And so I just want to put Ward 2, but the rest of the city on kind of notice that we will be reaching out and looking for ideas from our constituents, our residents, on what are your priorities that we need to be addressing and taking into account. So I would love to get feedback from my ward, from Ward 2. I'll also be putting up a poll on my Facebook and then in the Ward 2 group, so that we can kind of vote and get some consensus on what our Ward 2 would like to see kind of pushed forward for that. I also wanted to talk a little bit about one of our outgoing members. This is her last meeting. Wasn't quite prepared because I know that, you know, next week we'll have swearing in and so there'll be some transition, but I don't know that there will be much time to talk about this. So I just wanted to talk about Councilmember Hall. And I don't, I just want to make sure that everyone understands the impact that she has had on council and in this community, and what a fantastic community member she was, an active, active member of so many different things before she got on council. But I don't think that you understand how much she has supported new council members when they come on council. This is a really difficult thing to step onto, no matter how prepared you think you are, leading up to whether you are elected, appointed, whatever your pathway is, however involved you were in the community. It is like drinking through a fire hose at the very beginning. And she reached out to me, and I know several others, when they stepped on council, to kind of be that support system and the guiding light, and say, hey, if you have questions, if you need me, I will sit through, however long you need to work through some of these issues. And because Ward 4 and Ward 2 have so many issues that are similar, we, over the last year that I've, I've been on council, have worked really closely on several different things, mostly involving tree canopy, stormwater, things that really impact our two wards. And I just want to know how grateful I am to you and how much you have meant to me personally. And I'm going to really miss you. So thank you.
Councilmember Lynn?
I too would like to thank you. This is not an easy gig. We don't always agree up here. And, but I'll tell you that she puts in the work. She puts in a lot of work, and sometimes a lot, and a lot, a lot of work. But no, it just, anybody that's willing to do this job, whether you agree with them, like them, hate them, love them, think they're the greatest in the world, I promise you, it's community service. And anybody that's done it, I appreciate you. So thank you.
Councilmember Hall?
Well, as you all know, this is my last council meeting, and I think it should come as no surprise to anyone that I do have a few things to say tonight. So, and for you, Councilmember Lynn, I'm all ready to roll. So my intention, well, my promise to Ward 4, when I was sworn in on September 10 of 2019, was to show up and to do the work. My intention was to guarantee that Ward 4 neighbors would never be without a voice to represent them when it mattered. And in almost three years, I have not missed one city council meeting, and I'm really proud of that. I've also been assigned to two city council subcommittees, Oversight and Community Planning and Transportation. And I decided early on to make it my habit to also attend the Finance Committee and Business and Community Affairs Subcommittee meetings, to be better prepared for the votes I would be taking, based on a lot of decisions that are made at that subcommittee level. I've missed very few of those as well. I'm not here representing myself. I'm here to represent the diverse interests of my neighbors, as well as to make decisions that will benefit everyone in Norman. I learn from my Ward 4 neighbors every single day, and have been energized by so many who choose to stay engaged, including quite a few who are here with us tonight. It's not lost on me that today is Election Day, and that we all have one more opportunity to use our voice by voting. Choosing our elected officials and holding them accountable is one of the most important responsibilities we all have as citizens. And while elections today are all partisan, the city council is intended by our charter to be a nonpartisan body. I wholeheartedly believe it should stay that way. We are an elected body of nine, whose duty and responsibility is to represent not only our wards, but to protect the health, safety, and welfare of our community. The temptation to define issues that we face as a city in partisan terms, or who wins and who loses, is not productive. And as we have seen recently, it can be really destructive to the greater good of our city. Delivering clean water, protecting our watershed, providing reliable city services, promoting smart and sustainable growth, supporting local businesses, supporting our quality of life projects, reducing homelessness, and addressing affordable housing are all issues that we should be working on together to solve, not to tear each other apart. None of us can be good policymakers without the support of our city staff. I want to personally thank Daryl Pyle, Brenda Hall, Catherine Walker, Anthony Francisco, Jane Hudson, Sean O'Leary, Chris Mattingly, Jason Olson, Dawn James, Tim Powers, Kevin Foster, Travis King, and Rhonda Guerrero, for their leadership during challenging times, for their unwavering commitment to the residents of Norman, and their ability to help each of us understand the complexities and nuances of the work that they do every day, and how that might translate to what we do as policymakers. I also want to recognize the hundreds of city employees that keep the city running every single day, including those days that we have layered a pandemic or multiple severe weather events on top, just to keep things interesting. Throughout it all, our city employees could be counted on to come through for us. In my short time on city council, I've served with seventeen different council members. Each is unique in their own way and brings their life experiences with them. To each of you, who are not only my colleagues but treasured friends, I'm grateful for the opportunity to work with you, learn from you, and always appreciate your willingness to look for common ground to solve the problems that we face as a city. And to Helen Grant, she is already demonstrating that she also intends to show up and do the work. Since she was elected, we have both been committed to a smooth transition. It's been an enriching time for me to share all I know and love about Ward 4, our city, and the context of current issues that the council will continue to be facing. Councilmember-Elect Grant brings many qualities and skills that will serve her well. Ward 4, you are in good hands going forward. And finally, to the voters and residents of Ward 4, my heartfelt thanks for entrusting me with the opportunity to represent you. This has been one of the most, one of the hardest and most challenging things I've ever done, but in equal measure, one of the most rewarding. I've been lifted by your encouragement, by your support. I've learned from those who see things from another point of view, and motivated to make policy that leaves our city in a better place. I've been inspired by so many of you who have had the courage to use your voice, and it's been my privilege of a lifetime to represent Ward 4, the heart and soul of Norman.
Councilmember Tortorello?
I'd also like to thank Lee. I'm glad you took my call that night. We had a mutual friend who was an ex-council member at one time, and she was mentoring me through the process. And she goes, give Lee a call, give Lee a call. And she tried to set up the call, and you took my call. And, and we had more calls after that, and more calls. And I have to agree that, you know, when anyone comes on council, you're stepping up and you're standing out, and you're taking a lot of information. And it is a lot of information for one person, one term at one time. But you were kind enough to, to sit with me face to face before session, or one of the committee meetings, or on the phone. And we talked for a couple hours, you know, about a lot of things here. And that just, I think that shows your character, on the spirit and intent of how the council should be. You know, so you know, this is truly a nonpartisan environment, and the only way we can represent everyone equally and together is in a nonpartisan fashion. And I've seen you do that time and time and time again. I think we're going to miss you. You know, you're the grandmother of the council. She has all the, look, look, during, during retreats, who had all the pills, aspirins, and things like that when you needed a headache? It was you. You had that in your purse. So I have a headache, she goes, I got a cure for that, and you pull it out. So, but anyways, I think, I think we're, I'm going to miss you. I'm going to miss the phone calls. But more importantly, I'm going to miss your friendship, but we're still friends. And so I'm going to call on you from time to time and say, hey, remember two years ago, before I got on council, when you guys did this? Can you explain this to me? But, and, you know, so I want to, to let you know that, that I appreciate you, and I'm going to miss you. I'm going to miss that smiling face of yours every week, and that cheerful joy, everything about you. So, good luck, and hopefully we'll see you, see more of you in the public eye.
I am a grandmother, not to any of you, but the, but the proud-
That's a grandmother-like.
But the grandmother to Nora and Houghton, so.
Thank you for your service.
Councilmember Foreman?
Oh, Lee. You and I met when your husband Rick and I served on the Historic District Commission, and you were at every meeting, because you care about the, the history and the homes and the people of your ward. Your heart absolutely beats for Ward 4. You are the heartbeat, you are the pulse of Ward 4. To be honest, when I saw Ward 4 things on the agenda, I just always asked you how you felt about it. And I defaulted to your judgment, because I know that you were going to be so up to speed on it, and have cornered staff, and, you know, really pressured them into doing what you want them to do, right? So, because that's what you do for your people. You showed up. I don't know what we're going to do now without you. I can't imagine it. I am so sad that you're leaving. Your feet are tiny, but the shoes you leave behind are very big. And so I know that Helen is going to do a great job, because she has you to turn to, and you've done everything, and she's willing to show up. And so we're going to be in good hands, but you're going to be greatly missed. Love you.
Councilwoman Peacock?
Yeah, what can I say about Lee Hall? That has already been said. You've been a, you've been a great friend, a trusted ally, a policy stalwart, tireless advocate for Ward 4. I just can't, I can't begin to say enough positive things about you. I think you've set the bar extremely high for whoever comes after you, not only in this upcoming office, but anytime in the future. I, I can't say thank you enough for sharing the vision that you have for Norman, for a better Norman, with all of us, particularly on some of the initiatives that I find so very passionate. You've been right there every step of the way, and I, again, could never say thank you enough for that. Like Councilmember Foreman said, I can't really imagine life up here without you. Don't know what it's going to look like in a couple weeks to have somebody else in that chair, but I know, I know this isn't the end of the road. This is just only kind of a different path, and very, very excited to see what life and your role as a public servant has in store for you and the rest of us. Thank you.
Well, I definitely concur with all of those comments. Trying not to hold it together here. I've served with a lot of council members, as you all know, and I just think you have, thanks, you have worked as hard, if not harder than any, anybody that I've worked with, and it really shows. And we've had so much turnover on the council. It's hard to see somebody leave that has more time served, I guess. And so, whoo, was not expecting to lose control like this. I might have more to say next week, but just, thank you so much, Lee. You've done so much for Norman, and I will never forget what you've done. And I look forward to continue to working with you on the things we have going on. Okay. Up next is the Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. Staff recommends that Item 1 through 24 be placed on the Consent Docket. I need a motion to place Items 1 through 24 on the Consent Docket.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to place Items 1 through 24 on the Consent Docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to place Items 1 through 24 on the Consent Docket passes unanimously.
All right. Item number one here is Mayor's Appointments. They are as follows: Citizens Oversight Committee for Tax Increment Finance District Number 2, Kami Ellis, Kami Kelis; Economic Development Advisory Board, Sane Farzane, and Chris Purcell; Green Belt Commission, Richard Bornhauser; Norman Regional Hospital Authority, Paula Roberts; Item number two, Appointments of Drew Nichols as Presiding Judge, Gail Blaylock and Blaine Nice as Associate Judges, and David Porch as Acting Judge of the Municipal Court, each for a term beginning July 1, 2022, and ending June 30, 2024. Item number three, Finance Director's Investment Report as of May 31, 2022. Item number four, Monthly Departmental Reports for the Month of May 2022. Number five, Item, City Manager's Contract and Change Order Report. Item number six, Final Platte for the Summit Valley Edition, Section 3, generally located one-half mile north of Highway 9 and one-half mile east of 24th Avenue Southeast. Item number seven, Amendment to three, Amendment Number Three to the Contract with Crossland Construction Company, increasing the contract amount by $492,185.38 for additional costs associated with the asbestos abatement for the development center portion of the municipal complex renovation project and budget appropriation. Item number eight, Authorization of Reducing Retainage for the Contract with Flint Co. from 5% to 2.5% for the North Base Complex Phase 1 Project. Item number nine, Amendment Number Four to the Contract with GE Johnson Construction Company, increasing the contract amount by $2,653,243 for construction management at-risk services for the Young Family Athletic Center. Item number 10, Amendment Number Five to the Contract with Crossland Construction Company, increasing the contract amount by $423,737 for construction manager at-risk services for the Senior Wellness Center and budget appropriation. Item number 11, Revocable Right-of-Way License and Agreement with the Custard Factory in the Amount of $100 per year, allowing placement of string lights and poles within the public right-of-way. Item number 12, An Interlocal Agreement Contract with Central Oklahoma Transportation and Parking Authority, DBA, embarked to provide transit services for the City of DBA, embark to provide transit services for the City of Norman from July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023, in the amount not to exceed $3,560,195. Item number 13, A Norman Utilities Authority Contract with Stanley R. Sindelbach in the Amount of $450 per year for an agricultural lease of the property at 4020 East Tecumseh Road. Item 14, A Contract with Pinnacle View for the Lease of Property Located at 307 West Gray Street for a Period of Three Years Subject to Annual Appropriation of Funds. Item number 15, A Contract with Norman Economic Development Coalition for the Use of $1 Million in American Rescue Plan Act Funds for Qualifying Economic Development Expenditures. Item 16, A Resolution Appropriating $1 Million in American Rescue Plan Act Entitlement Funds from the Special Grant Fund Balance to be Used by the Norman Economic Development Coalition for the Implementation of Business Incubator Programs. Item 17, Conveyance of Title by Quit Claimed Deed for Property Located at 531 East Sim Street to the Norman Affordable Housing Corporation for Use as Rental House for Households at or Below the 80% Medium Family Income Threshold. Item 18, A Resolution Authorizing Mischak &amp; Associates LLC as an Agent for the City of Norman to Submit a Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, Grant Application to the Federal Emergency Management Agency for Phase One Improvements Planned for Lower Imhoff Creek. Item number 19, A Resolution Appropriating $3 Million in American Rescue Plan Act Entitlement Funds from the Special Grant Fund Balance to be Used to Fund Phase Two of the Lower Imhoff Creek Bank Stabilization Project. Item 20, A Resolution Establishing Procedures to Allow Building Permit Fees to be Adjusted and Satisfied as an Incentive for Residential Homes Achieving Certain Home Energy Rating Index Scores and Extension of the Pilot Program, June 30, 2024. Item 21, A Resolution of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, Setting forth a Process for Council to Follow in the Event of a Vacancy on City Council. Item 22, A Resolution of the Norman Utilities Authority Agreeing to File Application with the Oklahoma Water Resources Board for Financial Assistance Through the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Program, With the Loan Proceeds being Used for the Purpose of Financing Advanced Water Meteoring Improvements for the City of Norman and Improving a Professional Services Agreement. Item 23, Recommendation from the City Attorney to Approve a Settlement of City of Norman vs. Ron Ashley in the Amount of $210,000. Postponement, Item Number 24, A Consideration of Postponement of Ordinance 0-2122-48 until August 9, 2022, An Ordinance Granting Oklahoma Gas and Electric Company and Oklahoma Corporation a Franchise Contingent Upon Approval by the Voters at a Special Election on January 10, 2023. Okay, I need a motion to approve or reject the consent docket?
Approve.
Second.
Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket? Councilmember Schuler?
Yeah, I just want to make note of a couple of items. We had a study session earlier to talk about items number 18 and 19, which are about Lower Imhoff Creek, a stabilization project, which is a stormwater project to kind of get across the finish line. It's astounding that we're able to do both of these phases for a stormwater project that ranked really high on our stormwater needs in the city. These are, Phase One and Phase Two are impacting Ward Two and Ward Four. So we're really excited to get this across the line. And if you have any idea, this is exactly where the bridge is. So there was a really good discussion earlier. So if you're interested in what, how this money is getting put together, but it is going to be, one of them is a 90-10 federal match grant. And then the other, we're going to be utilizing ARPA money for it. So all told, it's going to be about an 80-20 match. If you kind of round out the numbers, that's what we were told from staff earlier. So this is money that we never thought that we could get. And eventually we'll free up money for future stormwater projects that we have many on our lists for needs. And I also just want to kind of underscore the importance of stabilizing this creek area to ensure that we protect this bridge asset that we just put millions of dollars into, to secure. So this will help make sure that that infrastructure continues to be stable in the future. And then also wanted to talk just about item number 21. This is something that's been working through the process for, I think, a number of years. We've had several vacant council seats for lots of different reasons. You may remember last year, I was the most recent appointment to council through a vacancy. And this is just trying to help codify some of those steps on how we get to fill vacant council seats. So kind of trying to figure out what is the best mechanism to do that and provide some more clarity for not only council, but also for residents, and to make it a little bit more represented of members of the ward. So excited to see all of these items come forward, and really supportive. Thanks.
Thank you. See no further council comments on here. The motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
Our votes have been cast, and the docket is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Onto the non-consent docket here. Item number 25, Consideration, Resolution R-2122-111, Amending the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan to Remove Property Located on the Northwest Corner of Imhoff Creek and Oakhurst Avenue, pardon me, and Oakhurst Avenue from the Mixed Use Designation and Place the Same in the Low Density Residential Designation. I need a motion to adopt or reject the resolution. Is there a representative of the applicant to make a presentation?
Thank you, Pro-King Mayor.
Sean, we did lose the projector just a moment ago. So if you have-
I saw that, yeah.
If you do have handouts, I'd be happy to pass them out for you.
Can you see this?
They can see the screen, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I understand. Is that good? Okay, all right. So we're going to do this a little bit impromptu as we used to. So if you guys can all see that up in your screens, we'll do that. So, okay, so Sean Rieger representing the applicant in this case. The applicant in this case is Lennar Homes. And Lennar is a national home builder, really a large home builder in the nation. And Lennar is here tonight. Greg Eric is here with the Land Development Vice President. Also Tyler Musney, the engineer, as well as associates with him, and Gunnar Joyce, and the whole team is here tonight. So we're here, and we're happy to answer any questions you have. But basically, Lennar's been around for over 60 years. They've been building throughout the whole nation. They have a number of different products. And this is a unique one they're bringing here tonight for the first time. This has done very well in Texas, and so we're excited to have it here in Norman. Lennar, I'll run through these slides. Nobody can see them on screen, so I'll move them pretty quickly. But Lennar, you can see, is dedicated to quality, value, integrity. They've done this for many, many years. One of the largest home builders around that you will see. This is the site. You're all familiar with the site. I'm going to move fairly quickly because Councilmember Studley and I have talked about this, and I think we're in fairly good shape. But I'll move fairly quickly to show you. This is the site, the site plan in context. You can see that it is basically 109 homes with detention basins. Those are shown as blue. Those will not be wet ponds. These will be dry detention basins. So I don't want you to look at that and suggest that that's going to be ponds. Those will be dry detention basins. But you can see it's basically one winding street through the development with an emergency access point on the lower left. And I'll show you a little more detail about that in just a moment. This is the concept, basically the concept image. And these are really unique to Norman, but they've done very, very well in Texas, where Lennar has done this many times. It's 30 by 100-foot lots, a unique lot that is a long, narrow lot. And that's something we're not used to here. We have done 40-foot wide lots before up in northwest Norman on a plat that hasn't been built yet, but it hasn't been approved. And so it's not unusual for us to get down to skinny lots. But these are single-family homes with entirely their own lot, with five-foot setbacks on each side of them, a driveway in front, and a garage out in front as well. So they are a single-family home. There will be community amenities with these, gazebo, a garden area, and barbecue area as well. And so then, if you look at this in context, this is the larger context. But this is, you see Hitachi across the street. We've been very careful to make sure that we're honoring Hitachi. This has always been the case when we're zoning around Hitachi. This was a case, I think, Councilmember, you were here when we did this last time. This was a firestorm of a zoning back in 2012 because, was it right before? You were sitting right here, I think. Okay, well, this was a firestorm of a zoning back then because we were doing multifamily, a large apartment complex on this site. That is indeed what is zoned right now, is a larger apartment complex on this site. This is effectively downzoned to single-family. So this would be a change in the downward sense. The 2025 is mixed use. You see it there. And then I'll breeze through these fairly quickly. But this is what it was currently zoned for, is a PUD that allows for mixed use of multifamily apartments, office, church, childcare, nursing home, and assisted living. All of that could be built right now on this site with 148 units of apartments within that, and two to three stories as well. Right now, this is approved for multi-story. So this would change it down to the single-family homes in this configuration. And again, as you see at the lower left, that's the emergency access. So that will be, enable this addition to be accessed in emergency situations, such as fire or EMS, if they need to. But in the general sense, it would be a closed-off intersection. And that really is largely, for several reasons, largely Hitachi. There is a truck bay area right here, significant truck activity right around this location on the lower left. We really don't want to interfere with that. And I think Sean O'Leary could talk deeper about that if you need to. But that's the main genesis of why we've tried to keep that as a sensitive area. And so then you see the layout. This is the green space. We've tried to keep and maintain a large buffer area across the northeast with, again, dry detention basins. And we will try to maintain as much trees in that area as we can. We don't really foresee interrupting that large linear path along the backside, and the streets winding through there. There's two office buildings. You see them right there. There will not be an interconnection with those office buildings. Those two office buildings access right on Imhoff. So those will continue with their own access point. Then in closing, I would just say, staff has shown that this is not out of character with the area, that the traffic mitigation is in place. In fact, there really will not be any increase in traffic as compared to what could be built there under the current PUD. So this is, again, really a downzoning. So Planning Commission supported this, overwhelming approval. And again, this would not change the overall character of the area. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions. Again, the whole team is here. I know staff has looked at this closely as well. So we're happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you very much.
I just want to know if you could quickly, or if someone could go into the stormwater mitigation for this area? Because I know, reading some of it, that was some of the concerns that I've had questions about. But I know that there has been a really good plan put in place to kind of mitigate some of that. So could you talk on that for us?
I can. And I'm going to introduce Tyler Musney with Johnson Engineering to sort of take you through this in closer context. They can see this, Tyler.
Okay. How do I back up to the floor?
You can go right, you want it right there?
Where's the one that showed the blue?
That one?
Yep.
All right.
Good evening, Tyler Musney with Johnson Associates. So on your screen, you can see two detention ponds, one on the east, one on the west. All of our stormwater will be routed to those ponds and eventually to the north. I think you might be able to see.
Now we can zoom in here, but-
Can I zoom in?
I don't think you can. Yeah, you're pointing to it right there.
Yeah, everything goes to where the pointer's at. There's an existing storm sewer structure right there. It's a 48-inch concrete pipe.
What's the, I don't see the pointer. What's the impact that that's going to have on Bishop Creek? Because that's the biggest concern that I'm hearing.
So we, as I say, we submitted preliminary calculations. We're showing a small decrease in the overall flow going to that point.
So it'll actually decrease the water going into Bishop's Creek because you guys are adding some additional stormwater mitigation in the area?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That was, that was one of the biggest concerns that I had heard. So thank you for that. Is this the time that I should kind of do my little summary, or? Okay, okay.
Yeah, Councilmember Studley really addressed my question. The most comments that I've gotten about this project are really about stormwater mitigation more than anything else. And, you know, I'll take one last time to just point out that as a council right now, because we don't have a stormwater utility in place, the only way we can contribute to try to strengthen our stormwater mitigation plans is to do it parcel by parcel when things come before council. So I'm happy to hear the answers that you had. And that was really only the question I had.
And let me add in too, 65% impervious is what we have maintained on every lot in the PUD. That's the R1 standard in Norman, so we're not changing.
I think I remember, I was at Planning Commission when this was presented. And I think that there was some conversation around the common space and the common areas. And you did provide some pictures of what that might look like. And I think what I'm seeing is some here on the southeast-
Correct.
Southwest, sorry, southwest.
Southwest, yeah.
Yeah, and then-
Over in this area down here.
Yeah, and then is this, this section kind of along the north and east edge where that other, the west or the east side detention pond is? Like, is that accessible? Because I know, that was some of the questions that were brought up during planning.
So what we will have to do is put in sidewalks on every street, both sides. So it will be accessible. So basically, concept being, on each end, with areas up here in the upper right, and then areas on the lower left, from either end, you will be able to get to the open space in the recreation area. Then also, the park is .25 miles up on Oakhurst, which is the public park with the kids' playground equipment and things like that.
Okay, yeah. And then just to be clear again, these, what you're showing right here is having water will be dry.
Dry, correct.
So unless we're having a rain event, those will be dry and usable as-
That's correct.
Kind of common space. Okay, thank you.
I just was curious if you know what the cost per unit is going to be on this?
I can quickly, I don't think they've really determined a price point yet, but it would be per market. They know, I know what you were talking about earlier. I think that the interest rates and some things like that right now are going to change a little bit. So I think they're hesitant to say what the price is until they see that settle down with the Fed changing the rate three times this year. So, but I think it would be market rate per square foot is what they're talking about.
I mean, are these going to be like $300,000 homes? Or are we talking like $180,000 homes?
I don't foresee $300,000. I don't know if, I think it would be well below that.
Right, okay. What, do you know what the square footage on these units are? Okay.
But as we always say, don't hold us there because construction costs, and that's high right now. I hope it doesn't go any higher, construction costs. But the builders are all paying enormous numbers right now for lumber and everything, so.
The point of me saying that is, I get that construction costs are high right now. And a lower income home in the grand scheme of things would probably be around $150, $180. But with construction costs, we're looking at $250,000. So I know a lot of people are concerned that these aren't going to be affordable homes. But guys, $250,000 right now is the low end of affordable housing. Unfortunately, that's just where we're at in the market.
It is.
So yeah, thank you. That was the only other questions I had.
A few, I don't see any other council comments. So you answered my question about why there isn't an access on Imhoff, the Hitachi trucks? That makes sense. That, that emergency exit, how is that access managed?
You know, I can't get into the details. I know we've done this before on multiple additions. But basically, my understanding is it's always been a crash gate, is what we've used, which is a crash gate that basically an emergency fire truck would go right through if they had to. But, and Sean, if you want to tell me any differently, but that's what I've always understood these to be. I'm getting the thumbs up from Sean, so I'm going to go with that must be accurate. But it basically is a crash gate that would hurt your car, but presumably would not hurt the fire truck when they go right through it, so.
I hope not. Okay, and then maybe a question for staff. This doesn't appear to necessitate a traffic signal at Imhoff and Oakhurst, but is it getting close to that? Or could it fully develop out and push it to that?
Thank you, Mayor Pro-Tim, and Councilor Sean O'Leary, Director of Public Works. No, not even close to a warranted traffic signal at the new entrance there at Delphine Drive and Oakhurst. No, not even close to a warranted traffic signal at the new entrance there at Delfine Drive and Oakhurst Avenue. A great question. This really is a very low traffic generator. You've got some pretty good numbers in your staff reports. Traffic impact analyses were done by the developers, engineer, and our team, which frankly allows us to support this lack of connection on the west end of the project where the emergency entrance would be. We prefer not to have long cul-de-sacs without dual entrances, but we've already talked tonight about the reason for that and the traffic safety concerns related to the mixture of passenger vehicles and truck movements there for Hitachi. But the other part of that analysis was that the traffic volumes generated in this subdivision are really quite low in terms of the typical subdivision, certainly as it relates to the multifamily zoning that exists there today. And that then led us to support this single entrance onto Oakhurst. And we do not anticipate the need for a traffic signal anytime in the future, certainly as a result of this project. We are seeing traffic growth on Imhoff and will continue to see that slightly on Oakhurst, but not, not seeing that in the future.
And appreciate that. And this project will be improving their frontage sections of Imhoff Road there, it looks like? Is that what I'm seeing?
That's correct. There is a widened section where the emergency access is, and then where the other, sort of the U-shaped section, they will be widening that adjacent to their properties.
Okay, thank you, Sean.
You bet.
And Sean?
Yes.
The cul-de-sac at the very back end of it, I guess you could say, where the emergency exit is, if kids live at the end of that, will they be able to get to the Imhoff sidewalk? Or do they have to go through the whole neighborhood?
I think they will be able to through, that will be a paved emergency access. But also, I think there may be a way to cut through that common area. I haven't seen a paving plan yet for the common area, but most certainly that would be common area accessible out to Imhoff, yes. I don't have an exact sidewalk layout, or, but yes.
Okay, that's all the questions I have. Is there any other, anybody else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers registered for this item?
No, sir.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak about this item? Are there any final comments from council regarding this item? Councilmember Studley?
So I too have learned a lot from Lee Hall, and she taught me how to go after city staff and get questions answered for my ward. So I had a lot of people reach out to me with different concerns, and a lot of that has been addressed tonight, but I just want to kind of briefly go over them. The protest letter, the one protest letter that I did see, unfortunately, I, you know, I apologize to this lady. I'm sorry that somebody lied to you, but unfortunately, this lady was told that that land would never be developed. Well, whoever told her that didn't own the land and couldn't make those promises. So I'm sorry that that was told to you, but that is just not the case. With that being said, in 2012, the city actually did approve, as Sean alluded to, that there could be apartments that could go in there. So right now, they don't have to come back to us, and they can build a larger apartment complex there. And I don't know about you guys, but I don't think we need any more apartments in Norman right now. I'd like to see some more single home, single-family homes. And so I was really excited to see this be presented, and especially in my ward, because we need those. We have a lot of apartments in Ward 1, and I'd like to see some new homes. Another concern that was brought up was the size of the lots, that they were small. But this is not uncommon, and especially not in Ward 1. If you look at Alameda and 24th and some of those newer, nice homes that were built over there, right there on the corner of Summit Lakes Edition, those are actually, it's a gated community, and it's got very small lots, and they're close together. And they want it like that. Not everyone likes to do yard work. I hate yard work, so I would have taken a smaller lot. The other thing that I like about this is that there's no sprawl. We're not going out into Ward 5 or up into Ward 6 going north. This is staying in the city. They've done their due diligence with stormwater, and I appreciate that. Like we mentioned, the safety with this trucks, I know that there was some concern about not being able to access through cars on Imhoff, but it's literally right across the street from the access point where the trucks go in and out of Hitachi. And so it just poses a real danger to our cars, our smaller cars, if you're trying to compete with a semi, who's going to win? So with that, there was a traffic study, and currently it's at 18% use for Oakhurst and Imhoff at that intersection. With this addition being put in, it's going to increase to 27%. So it's not a huge increase in traffic. So I'm really not worried about that. I think that that was addressed. And then again, the cost, as we just said, it's 2022, guys, and we are in a major inflation, and we're about to hit a recession. And so cost of building and the cost of homes is high right now. It's just the reality of it. But again, I really appreciate the thoughtfulness of this. I like the look of the homes. I think they're really pretty, and it's, I'm excited to see this in Ward 1. So I have all the confidence in it, so approved. I'm one vote, but yeah.
Any other comment, councilmembers? Okay. The motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Votes have been passed unanimously.
Okay, moving on to item 26. Consideration of Ordinance 0-2122-42 upon second and final reading, rezoning property located at the northwest corner of Imhoff Road and Oakhurst Avenue from the PUD Planned Unit Development District to PUD Planned Unit Development District. I don't think I said it right, but. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
This is a companion item to the previous item. Are there any further questions from council regarding this item? None? Are there any, let's see, motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote. Actually, wait a minute. And nobody wanted to speak last time I asked, so we'll go on to the next one. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Item 27, consideration of a preliminary plat for the Villages addition, a planned unit development. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the preliminary plat.
Motion to approve.
Second.
This is a companion item to the previous two items. Are there any further questions from council? Madam Clerk, are there any speakers registered for this item? Anybody in the audience like to speak about this item? Are there any final comments from council regarding this item? Motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary plat. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the preliminary plat passes unanimously.
Item 28, consideration of Ordinance 0-2122-43 upon second and final reading granting special use for a church, temple, or other place of worship in the R3 multifamily door, or 494 Elm Avenue. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Is there a representative of the applicant to make a presentation? Okay, yeah, or recognize Councilwoman Peacock?
Regarding item 28, I have actually worked professionally on this project. So pursuant to Section 2-103D of the City's Code, the Ethics Ordinance, I intend to recuse myself from both the discussion and the vote on this item because I have an actual conflict. I have been advised, however, that I may make a presentation on behalf of my client, but I cannot participate in the vote or debate, and I must remove myself from the dais for the entirety of council's consideration of this item.
Need a motion to recuse Councilwoman Peacock?
Second.
All right, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been. To allow Councilmember Peacock to abstain passes unanimously.
I guess we'd go right into the presentation. I don't think, this might be a first here. I don't think I've had a councilman recuse and then present.
I'm glad I could break the mold for you.
Yeah.
And I did actually prepare some printed copies, so if anybody up there would like them or in the audience, I have some here if they'd like to see them. Okay, let's see if I can work this.
Mayor Protim, we did confirm that the YouTube feed is picking up everything on your screens. So it's an inconvenience for the audience, but everybody at home is able to see what you see. Perfect.
Excellent. Good evening, councilmembers. Matt Peacock with Peacock Design. Tonight, I'm here before you as the architect representing the OE of Hillel Foundation, which is the Jewish student organization at the University of Oklahoma. We are here requesting a very straightforward special use of this property, and I'm going to go into a little bit more detail of why that is. So this is the existing Hillel building on Boye Street, which I'm sure many of you are familiar with. It was constructed in 1951, and fortunately, this building has outlived its useful lifespan. So we are, you know, evaluating and looking at rebuilding a new building in this same area. However, we very much intend to honor the mid-century spirit of the design in our new project. And so that's really the crux of why we're here tonight. In order for us to build a new building in the same location, we have to comply with the current zoning ordinance, which in this case means having to request a special use. You can see that when this facility was built in 1951, it was an allowable use under the R3 zoning. However, in the 1970s, the R3 zoning was amended to require a special use for this type of facility. We're not looking to change the zoning, just get the special use to continue doing what Hillel has been doing there on this site for the past 70 years. Here is an existing site plan showing the existing building on the east half of the lot. And here is the proposed site plan showing the new building will go essentially in the exact same footprint and that the overall site configuration, the configuration will remain essentially the same. This is a rendering of what the new building will look like. As I said previously, our plan is to honor the, kind of the mid-century heritage of this existing building. And we're aiming to do that, as you can see here, with an extensive use of breeze block. What you are actually seeing in this particular rendition to the building, and I'm going to show you why on the next slide, that is a significant point of interest. So from left to right, the building facade is actually the Jewish holiday calendar with window placement and voids in the breeze block highlighting important dates on that calendar, and with Yom Kippur and the High Holidays being the entrance to the building and the most prominent feature. Really excited about the outreach, educational potential this will provide to the public. But we're also hopeful that this, you know, will become a jewel of the campus corner area and not only raise awareness for the Hillel. Like I said, it's a really straightforward request, so with that, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? The, most of the trees on the property are being preserved?
Yes, sir.
Saw tree replace, or placement plan, I wasn't quite sure exactly what that.
That was, when I originally submitted this, I sent an old site plan that didn't show the existing trees, and the one you saw was the updated version.
Perfect.
Yeah, so all the existing ones are on board or intended to remain, and we're actually adding a couple more.
Great, okay. All right, let's see. Are there, see, we had no questions from council. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers registered for this item? Anybody in the audience like to speak about this item? Seeing none, okay. Are there any final comments from council regarding this item? Councilmember Hall?
Well, it's my pleasure for my last vote to support this project. You know, this is a classic piece of architecture from the 1950s, and my first choice always in core Norman is to do whatever we can to preserve and restore existing buildings when we can. But unfortunately, when buildings are not properly maintained over 50, 60, 70 years, it's really hard to go back and rehabilitate the building. And so that's the case that we have here. And one of the things that I really appreciate about this project is the nod to the architecture that was there. We don't always see that, and so I really appreciate just the sensitivity to what was there, the character of the neighborhood, how the new footprint is almost identical. The parking is almost identical, and it is designed in a way to really fit in and be a part of the neighborhood. So those are the kinds of projects that are really easy to support. And then you add just the extra features of incorporating the Jewish calendar into the design. I think this is going to be a very special place for our students to enjoy for years to come.
Thank you, I agree. All right, and any other, no other comments from council? Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have. And to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously with Councilmember Peacock abstaining.
I will, I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Second.
Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been. The ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously with Councilmember Peacock abstaining.
Thank you. Next item is our last item, miscellaneous comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address city council. Due to Open Meeting Act regulations, council is not able to participate in discussion during miscellaneous comments. Remarks should be directed to the council as a whole and limited to three minutes or less. Are there any, anybody signed up to speak in miscellaneous comment?
Yes, we will start with Stephen Lett.
Stephen Lett, Wardford. I'm a volunteer for Norman Caravans. This afternoon, I learned that the city decided not to enter into negotiations with us or any other service provider to provide on-demand transit to shelters and homelessness program locations. In response to the city's request for proposals, we developed a robust proposal to offer these services that met all requirements of the RFP. The city's letter today informing us of their decision offers the following reasons. Our organization's current nonprofit status, the long lead time to acquire necessary vehicles, 12 to 18 months, duplication of services with both current and future transit social services initiatives, and the submitted proposal being overly broad for the requested service. The way I channel my disappointment and anger in general is to do research and sublimate my desire to scream into logical rebuttals. So here we go. Number one, regarding status, Steve Ellis will speak to that. Two, regarding vehicle lead time. On my way out here, I called Fowler Toyota to get a timeline to receiving some of the primary vehicles we requested for a Prius, the wait time is about 12 weeks, for a Sienna, about 20 weeks. A couple of weeks ago, we got a call from a vulnerability dealer in Oklahoma City to see if we were interested in their conversions of Siennas, so those were on hand. These are the primary vehicles we need, not 12 to 18 months, just three to four. Regarding duplication of services, we are not duplicating any services. Ask our friends on the street, ask the NPD, ask COCMHC, ask Food and Shelter, ask CCFI, ask Catholic Charities, ask Mission Norman, ask Embark. I also wish to push back on the underlying logic here. We need these services in duplicate and triplicate. The scarcity mindset is outrageous when we easily find 1.5 million to spend on yet another park. Regarding the submitted proposal being overly broad, I am the primary author of our proposal. The reason our proposal was broad is because the city asked it to be. The RFP reads, quote, "Applicants are also encouraged to identify other existing service gaps outside the scope of this RFP and that the applicant could serve in conjunction with their proposed transportation service." I spent a lot of time doing this research. I did what you requested, and you chose to use this as a point against us. After elaborating these reasons, the city letter states, quote, "We understand that many of those factors are out of your control." Yes, indeed, they were out of Norman Caravan's control, but the decision to help us take care of our unhoused community was entirely in your control, and the city chose yet again to fail our unhoused friends.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else signed up to speak on this item?
Jessica Esther?
If you have signed up, go ahead and come into the chambers at this time.
If you'll just state your name and address, please.
Right here?
Whichever, I think both of them.
The other one.
Wait, this one right here, if you're.
Right here?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Jessica Esther. I moved out here three months ago to Norman, and I have concern that I wanted to voice that Norman Caravans needs funding, and they really need the help with the funding, and they deserve the funding, as well as more housing and resources for the homeless, and that there's not, there's too many gaps in the resources, there's not enough. And Caravans is one of our resources that we really need, and it's important for us to have it because the, we're all struggling really hard right now. So I think it's important that there, the funding should be used in the right way.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other speakers?
Dan Munson.
I am Dan Munson from Ward Six. Thanks for filling in tonight. Thanks for your service to our city. And if Mayor Clark's watching or will watch this, I'd just like to say thank you to her as well. You guys had tough terms, tough environment, so thanks for your service. The thing that I wanted to talk about tonight was a recent trip that I made up to Kansas. I went to Olathay, Kansas, and I stayed at a hotel right across the street from the soccer complex. And so I walked over and I checked out their soccer complex, and it was pretty amazing. They had nine fields, it was all synthetic fields. I think the facility is about three years old. And that particular day I was up there, it was two weeks ago, it was, it was like 100 degrees out. And what I noticed was there was this tremendous heat there, and I was looking at just the different shade opportunities for spectators. And when we think about youth sports, who pays for them? It's parents and grandparents, right? They're usually the ones that throw in the money for youth sports, whether it be a rec team or a traveling team. And from what I've seen, not only at their soccer complex, but also Overland Park, I drove over there because it was in close proximity, they really didn't have any shade opportunities either. And we've got a, we've got a beautiful facility coming, 22 fields, that's, that's amazing. And, and I'm really glad that we're, we're going to have a large complex. And I think we have an opportunity to differentiate ourselves here in Norman by thinking about the spectator, because you have to believe that parents are going to look at their calendars at the beginning of the year, and they're going to determine which soccer tournament should we go to. And if you have a soccer tournament at a facility that takes into consideration of the spectator and provides shade and accommodations for them, I think that's going to attract more teams to come to our city to participate. I'm running out of time here, but I have ideas on how to pay for that without tax dollars, so I'm happy to, to pass those along. Thanks again.
Thank you. Any other comments or people signed up to speak?
Susan Sparks Smith.
Hello. Believe it or not, this is my first time to address the council. And I used to have very bad stage fright, but I've gotten over it. First of all, you've done a great job, and I appreciate the fact that you took the time to answer my email that time. I really appreciate it, even though I don't live in your. And I'm sorry, Stephen, I'm crying. And another thing, I owe two people on the council a very big apology. And Kelly Lynn is one of them. He gets paid $200 a month and a free meal.
100.
100, my correction, to serve on council, and I truly appreciate your time and effort. And I said bad things about you last night on Facebook, all over Facebook. And, and if, who, was it Will Rogers who said, "If you can't say something nice, then don't say anything at all." I don't know who said that, but anyway. And I wish Mayor Lett Haichola was here tonight because I owe him a sincere apology What else was I going to say? Oh, you noticed that I went out to the bathroom a while ago? It's because I had to go pee. And I got to meet Chief Foster. I had never met him before, and he's been my Facebook friend ever since he joined, became chief. And so I was thrilled to meet him. Well, anyway, I went in the bathroom, came out, and I looked him square in the eye, and I said, "I'm getting old. I have the bladder the, the size of a pea." And wouldn't you know it, I have to pee again. But anyway, I was going to keep this short and sweet and decided to give a speech. But the last thing I have to say, two days ago, someone on Facebook told me that they used to work for the Homeless Alliance, and that my proposal that I've been blasting all over Facebook.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Our next speaker?
Alan Hatcher.
Hello. My name is Alan Hatcher in Ward Eight. I'm a driver and founder of Norman Caravans. We got the letter saying, no, we're not going to be your partner with the, on the request for funds from you all today, in case anyone listening didn't catch that yet. We got turned down. So, yeah, I don't, I hate speaking to you guys, I hate coming to this awful room. The last time I was here, it was because a business owner in downtown didn't like free food being given away, given away in the vicinity of his business. And so you all helped him shut it down by using an ordinance and interpreting that ordinance in like such a ridiculous way that we still look back at just in disbelief. And then now we're here because business owners complained about free shelter being in the vicinity of downtown business centers, and so you helped them shut that down, too. So there's kind of a pattern, and that's, that's what you do well. And we kind of wanted to see if there was any, any likelihood of you wanting to do something different, actually build something new that doesn't exist, and actually solves the problems that people that are not business owners face in this town. But, and I didn't think you would from the start. I, you know, then based on my experience with you and kind of what I see is the interests that you represent, I didn't think there was any chance. But my friends did, and so I went along with it. And I didn't want to be proven right, but I was. You guys passed on it for just nonsense reasons, like duplication of services, come on, get real. Like, if that was the case, we wouldn't be getting calls from everybody that Steve listed all day long, everybody, that needs help with people that, that there is no other option for. And that we have cops that say, can you drive this person home? And I say, you do it. Take a 15-minute break off the clock, just give your neighbor a ride three blocks. And they say, okay, I'll get in trouble. And then like somebody from IMSA had the same thing. Well, I can't do it. I can't do it, I'll get in trouble if I just give this person a ride home, this person in crutches or whatever, this person who's going to have a heat stroke. I can't do it because I'll get in trouble. Please, can we, Caravans? I know that it's, you know, 10:00 PM, and you've been doing this for free all week long since 7:00 AM every single day, but please can you do this? And so we usually like, kind of like complain to them about how they get funding and we don't, and like they can complain to you guys on our behalf, please, so we can maybe get some funding to do this, and then, and then they get mad at us, and then we usually do it. Talking about like the cop that called earlier today, asking someone to get a ride home because he's going to have a heat stroke. And I said, you do it. And he said, I can't. And then he hung up on me, and so I didn't want to try to get political because I started talking about the money that they get and the money that we don't get. And so he hung up, and then we went and picked the person up, and the cop had just left him there stranded. And so we gave this person a ride home, and that's the kind of shit we do every fucking day, and it's not being duplicated anywhere. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. We have other.
Stephen Ellis.
Steve Ellis.
Hey, my name is Steve Ellis. I'm a member of Ward Four, but more importantly for tonight, I'm also a member of the Norman Caravans Board. And I want to thank the city staff for their attention to our response to their request for a proposal. So we offered something that was asked for. I think that Dr. Lett and Mr. Hatcher did a nice job of addressing the specific concerns that the legal staff raised, and I don't think they were very coherent. But I can't help but be disappointed by sort of what's been a missed opportunity here tonight. And I hope that the city council will reflect on that and do what they can to sort of allow us to continue the services that we're doing. Caravans is really, in many ways, sort of standing in the gap right now where there's a serious need. I think the, the real rub with the city contract was that Caravans doesn't have its nonprofit status yet. There's a bit of a catch-22 here, I think, as the city attorney's office realized, we can't get our status expedited without some sort of funding contracts. I'm sad to say that the city didn't want to take a leap for us, but I think we've actually solved that problem, so that hurdle is something that we're going to get over regardless. And I recognize that the city letter was not a no, but a not now sort of letter. But I want to remind the council of the urgency of the homeless issue here in Norman. Now really is the time to start doing something. Funding Caravans is an easy, high-impact thing to do. Our drivers do a broad range of social work, such as matching people with services. Even though that might exceed the city's request, that's a crucial thing for the community. And it's worth pointing out that even the Norman Police Department uses caravan services quite a bit. We're functionally Norman's current unarmed crisis response. So caravan serves as an anchor in this community. It's pretty much the only thing going right now that's keeping Norman's tattered homeless program in place. It also is a vehicle for, for future advances in this area. So it's, I think it's really time to start supporting this vital service, and I hope we can get council members on board to try to pick up at the next level. There's some hope in the letter from the city attorney's office. I hope you get a chance to look at it, and hopefully we can find some way to cooperate on that basis. Thank you.
Thank you.
James Cranilson.
How you guys doing today? I want to tell you a little story. I was in downtown Tulsa, and I was homeless for 10 years, and now this is 11th, 10 years and 11 months. And now we got kicked, now we got kicked out of the home, the warming shelter. And now it's going to be more dangerous because some of these homeless people got heart attacks or seizures or whatever. And if we die, yeah, yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle France.
My name's Michelle France. I'm currently homeless. I am a bachelor's prepared nurse. I'm a domestic loss survivor. And I suffer from mental illness. And I have to say that this company, this people, they don't save lives, that's what they do every day. Exactly what they do. And I really think they need your help. They need a lot of people's help. Not a lot of people out there don't have any homes, they don't have the help to get to their doctors. Even people that have mental illness and have a place to live here in Norman need transportation, and that's what they do, too. So I think denying them that is a mistake, a huge mistake. Don't have to say.
Thank you.
Jerry Schmidt.
Jerry Schmidt, and I've been homeless for five years, and I have seizures. I used to stay at the warming center, and now that that's closed, we have nowhere to stay. I have COPD and everything, supposed to be on oxygen, can't carry the oxygen with me because I have nowhere to stay permanently. And the Caravans give me a ride back and forth every day instead of me having to carry my luggage and everything on my back, and, you know, it really provides a whole lot, and I think we need this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jade Kleshar.
Hello, thanks for hearing me. I'm here with my friends, and I've been homeless now for three months, and I've witnessed a lot of trauma, a lot of pain out on the streets. I'm myself am a survivor of trauma and domestic violence and suffer from a lot of mental illness, and I've been unable to work for a couple of years now. And I was living at an apartment here in Norman that Section 8 denied funding last year, which I understand why. The apartment wasn't taking care of their stuff. At the same time, it left me without a home. And I've, I say three months, I tried staying with some family for a few months from October through March, and that didn't work out. It was an unsafe situation that I had to get out of. And there have been help, some organizations in Norman to give help in some ways, and those are very much appreciated. And at the same time, there's a lot of gaps in the help. And Caravan, I want to give props to them because they've been lifesavers in so many ways. Being able, not just to give rides, but meals, moral support, being able to get financial support when we don't have supplies or even hygiene products. And also, the warming shelter was a lifesaver for many of us who don't feel safe just trying to stay out on the streets because there is danger out there. And so many of us are concerned about our safety and our health right now, so I'd just like to, you know, voice my opinion that I would appreciate more effort being done to closing those gaps. Thank you.
Joe Swanson.
Jay, sorry for my handwriting writing. So I'm Jay Swanson, I'm with Ward Eight, and a lot of people have already said great things, so I don't really need to give a whole speech, but I can say that my family raised me to care about a person, not for their ability, but for who they are, who their story is, and to give them a chance to share their story and be, have their needs met and be the best they can be. This led me to be a case manager in our community. I try every day to get people the resources, and I can say Caravans has helped, the warming shelter has helped, and we already don't have enough. And getting rid of more of the very few resources that we have shows me that Norman doesn't care about people for who they are. They only care about people for how they can profit.
Yes. Would like to report to the council that staff had shared we were, delivered a request for proposal when we got communication from the property owner that the warming shelter would be closed in search of assistance in the establishment of Norman's next warming shelter. That request will close on Friday, I believe, and we will be reporting back to council tomorrow. and we will be reporting back to council responses from some of our continuum of care members in their ability to provide those shelter services. So we'll keep you up to speed and if the opportunity presents itself and we get the responses we are hoping for, we'll bring that action to council to get that shelter reestablished as quickly as possible.
Appreciate that update. Is there anybody in the audience that hasn't spoken that would like to speak about miscellaneous comment?
I'm Scott Lee. I actually live at Ward Four and I just wanted to come up and say, thank you, Lee. You're great, okay? You and I, we have our differences, but at least we listen to each other. And so let's, as a, as a community at Norman, let's, let's try to do that, you know? And also let's try to have some fun. This is, you know, it's a great community, but Lee, you're awesome. I just want to make sure that you know that the community that you made will afford better. So thank you for everything.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak? Seeing none, okay. This meeting is adjourned.